Where's Patty?
How you doing? Huh?
Oh. Denise here?
Yeah, she is.
What is he doing, sir?
We have a court.
Matt, we, uh...
From our, from our...
Patty made it on the kitchen wheel birthday.
He said he'd come if we needed a court.
At your inaugural speech, we're now... For four items.
Right, right, right.
To a kid that age, it's everything. You can't.
And, and if you just don't talk a lot, yeah.
We attorney...
Pot, kettle, pot, calling the kettle black.
No, I took...
Yeah. What's the best week? Ten days ago, P. One. You probably put in twice as much time as you count.
I'm going to call this, uh, meeting to order. Uh, this meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. Stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Bylock is late.
He's on his way, yes.
Dr. Foster, absent.
Family. Has a family identity.
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Present.
Mrs. McKessy?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
She is also with family.
Um, Mr. Block?
Here.
Ms. Abramsen?
Here.
Can we go straight to the student advisory board?
Yes, let's do that. Mrs. Gorman, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight with your wonderful group of Council Rock South students.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
Did you kick off our student advisory board?
I will. Good evening, Mr. Klein, school board directors and guests. It is my pleasure to stand in for Mr. Funk this evening. I'm happy to accompany our representatives from Council Rock South Student Advisory Board. Jared, Jack, Felicia, Hannah, and Victoria have each prepared a summary of the recent and current activities that are going on at Council Rock South, so at this time, I'll ask Jared to begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jared Robner, and I'm glad to be back in the new year as the 12th grade representative for Council Rock South. First about Martin Luther King Junior Day. On Monday, January 19th, Council Rock High School South once again hosted the district's annual Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. The traditional day off was actually a day on for well over 300 elementary, middle, and high school students. Students volunteered their time and gave back to the community by assembling care packages for local homeless shelters and packaging food items for local pantries. Additionally, students created beautiful blankets and pillows to be shared with those in need. Congratulations to 6th grade student Ava Ondick from Soul Finestone and Mitchell Given, Griffin, excuse me, Holland Elementary for submitting and presenting their winning essays on the meeting of MLK Day. Special thanks to State Representative Steve Sanisaro and Scott Petry for attending the event and issuing House Proclamations. Next, on to the senior class trip to Disney. Last month marked the final payment collection for the senior class trip to Disney. With all dues paid, students now have finalized rooms and teacher chaperones. The senior class student council is putting the finishing touches on planning. Student council is in the process of making the senior trip t-shirts as well as reviewing all trip information and translating rooming lists onto official documents. The final countdown continues with only 67 days to go before arriving at the happiest place on earth. And finally, although stuck in the cold of winter, it is never too early to begin thinking about spring events. Looking forward, the biggest spring event for the senior class has to be prom. The senior prom is on Friday, May 29th at the lovely National Constitution Center in Philly. The food has been selected by the senior class officers with an Italian theme featuring different kinds of pasta, chicken parm, steak, a variety of desserts, and much more. The senior class student council just met with the DJ this week to discuss lighting, design, and setup for the dance. Ticket price is yet to be determined. Although it may seem like a while away, from what I'm experiencing this year, the time will pass before anybody else knows it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Wheatley, and I am the 11th grade representative for Council Rock South Student Advisory Board. From January 20th to January 23rd, South hosted the annual Council Rock Education Week. Many parents of students attended the conferences, and all were invited to join the administrators for coffee on Thursday, the 22nd. Junior prom is scheduled for April 24th with a purple and black masquerade theme. All juniors are invited to attend, and tickets are set at $80. The dance will take place at the Princeton Hyatt as always. In music news, South Vocal Ensemble and South Orchestra had successful trips to the White House in Washington, DC on Monday, December 22nd. Both groups played two successful one-hour sets and still had time to do some sightseeing in the White House and around Washington, DC. Despite the rainy jury conditions, each group still was able to make the most of this presidential opportunity. Golden Wings, Golden Wing Theater Company's winter production of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang will take place Friday, March 6th and 7th, Friday, March 13th and 14th at 7:00 PM, and March 7th and March 14th at 2:00 PM. The show will feature almost 100, 150 elementary schoolers from around the district. Finally, South Orchestra is anxious and ready for their long-awaited trip to Greece. Students will leave on May 20th and return May 28th. They will take a cruise around many islands in Greece before returning to Athens to perform twice. They will sure to orchestrate their best, and we all know that they will certainly bio-win the respect of their audiences. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felicia Wilkoff, and I am the 10th grade representative from Council Rock High School South. After a huge amount of studying and the joys of midterms, students are anxiously looking forward to a break from school. Luckily, there will be Teacher and Service Day on Friday, February 13th, so relief is in sight. Additionally, due to President's Day, schools and offices will be closed on Monday, February 16th as well. On February 18th, to the delight of some students and to the dismay of others, report cards of the second marking period will be available on the Home Access Center. Also, Council Rock High School South is close to setting up a date to communicate with the International Space Station through the ARIS program. It has been confirmed that the contact with the International Space Station will occur during the week of February 16th, although the exact date is not yet known. Special technology has been set up at our school, giving students the chance to communicate with astronauts and cosmonauts aboard the International Space Station and places all around the world. This event has been eagerly awaited by all and will be a great experience for the Council Rock community. Finally, the Council Rock Education Foundation has recently provided a grant to support a view of Council Rock from above. Physics teacher Joe Warwick at Council Rock South heads the project where students will be constructing a fully functional unmanned aerial vehicle. The UAV is built and is currently being tested flying autonomous missions on South's campus. The UAV includes a GPS, altimeter, magnetic compass, and a GoPro video camera stabilized by a gimbal to optimize video. Students are currently learning about the physics of how the hexacopter flies as well as the politics of drone usage in the United States. Students are also creating applications for the UAV to highlight Council Rock School District activities. I look forward to reporting to you at future board meetings. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Devlin, and I am the 9th grade representative for Council Rock South. Because spring sports officially start on Monday, March 2nd, winter sports are coming to a close. South's wrestling team finished second in the district team event. They are participating in the state team event tonight in Hersie, Pennsylvania. Postseason wrestling individual tournaments will begin February 14th. All other winter sports are concluding their regular season schedules and will prepare for postseason. Program planning night occurred on January 13th. Parents were able to see various course offerings of our core and elective departments. Currently, students are meeting with counselors to select courses for the 2015-2016 school year. Although Mr. Klein may not look forward to snow in the forecast, the 291 ski club members at South surely do. Immediately following school on five Fridays, the skiing and snowboard members load six Hagy Coach buses to Blue Mountain. Skiers and snowboarders enjoy the bus ride to and from the slopes. Once at Blue, new members may take lessons or tube, but most get right on the ski lift and hit trails such as Paradise, Lazy Mile, Barney's Bumps, and even some terrain parks. On most nights, South is joined by five busloads of North students. Although everyone is eagerly anticipating spring, with only two ski club trips left, most members want to make the most of what's left of winter. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Minassian, and I'm a junior at Council Rock High School South. I'm also a student in the Health Science Program at Middlebuxt Institute of Technology. MBIT held their first shadowing day event on February 2nd in honor of Grand Hog Day. Current MBIT students were invited to bring a friend in 9th, 10th, or 11th grade to shadow their program. We were delighted to have 25 students express interest in participating in this event. In addition to our event, MBIT provides shadowing opportunities, individual tours, and career assessments throughout the school year. Interested students may schedule a visit by speaking with their school counselor. Skills USA District 2 competitions will occur on February 10th and February 11th. MBIT will be sending over 50 students to compete in the competitions held at Central Monaco Technical High School. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. A lot of new programs and events have been happening with HOSA. The students have collected over 250 pounds of food from their annual food drive. The students also worked with the blood drive with the, with Red Cross. We have collected 52 pints of blood, and thank you for everyone that has donated. HOSA also held their annual coat drive with students who have collected over 75 winter coats. On March 11th, 12th, and 13th, MBIT will be sending 12 students from their Health Science and Health programs to compete in the Penn HOSA State Leadership Conference in Lancaster. The Middlebuxt Institute of Technology is offering its deepest support to our school's community and the family of former multimedia technology teacher Christopher Toley. Mr. Toley will be remembered as an outstanding teacher who spent 12 years on staff at MBIT, always having a positive impact on the lives of his students and all whom he worked with. In 2014, Mr. Toley was named Outstanding Career Instructor in the Career and Technical Education. We at MBIT knew him as an outstanding teacher and person. We appreciate your support at this difficult time. I look forward to reporting you at the April's Board Meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You guys did a fantastic job. Jack, I must say, oh, Bo, that was really bad puns. You know who's really good at this stuff is, is Mr. Abramsen, too. I'm surprised he didn't jump in on a couple symphonic puns.
It was too good for me.
So, Mrs. Gormley, as always, Council Rock South students carried themselves extremely well. Your work was fantastic. Thank you for the updates on everything that's going on in South and MBIT, and we look forward to seeing you in a couple months.
Thank you all for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Gormley. Mr. Klein, superintendent's report, please.
Most of the information was either repeated last week or last night or in the CR News. The only thing I want to do is just offer the condolences. As Victoria said, we had three significant losses in the Council Rock community recently. I'll echo what Victoria said about Chris Tully, who was a teacher at MBIT, and his, his legacy to Council Rock and to the students at MBIT will not soon be forgotten. He was an outstanding teacher, and we offer our condolences to his family. Detective Kevin Cornish's funeral went by, uh, Chancellor, today as the procession moved on. Detective Cornish, as you know from Ben Salem, died this weekend in a 5K as he was running. His family lives in the Holland Elementary School community. His daughter goes to Holland Elementary, and so we offer our sincere condolences to the family of Detective Cornish. And finally, Council Rock School Board remembers fondly, I know, Mr. Alan Harbison, who was a member of our school board for many years. Mr. Harbison passed away last week, too, so we offer his wife Barb and his family our deepest condolences. And I will remember Mr. Harbison, as I know many of you will, as a man of absolute character and integrity. He was a wonderful school board member. So with those three sad pieces of news, Council Rock remembers each of those three folks and wishes their family well. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We'll move to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience who are watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. Rick Stadler?
Rick Stadler, Holland. I originally came here in July to talk about the upcoming teacher's contract. But when I got here, there were about 150 people from Wrightstown. And for the last six months, I think you've had the Wrightstown rebellion going on, so I've stayed away. It looks like that rebellion has finally been quelled, so I want to talk about the teacher's contract, which is important to everyone. Council Rock teachers average approximately $94,000. According to the Census Bureau, in Bucks County, the average salary is approximately 57 for its residents, 46, okay, for the nation, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Council Rock teachers, 16% toward their medical plans, which are Cadillac. Average private sector, 25 to 35%, depending on your source. Council Rock teachers, dental plan paid totally. Private sector, not the case. Usually, no dental plan. If there is one, a big payment. Sick leave accumulated. Council Rock teachers, when they leave, they're paid 75% of a sub's rate for sick pay up to five grand. Private sector, take it or lose it. Work year, Council Rock teachers, 190 days. Private sector, 240 to 250, depending on your source. Holidays, Council Rock teachers, every conceivable holiday. Private sector, usually 10. This is my favorite. Pensions. Most Council Rock teachers hired before 2011 get a pension equal to 2.5% times the year's work times their highest salary based on three years' highest salary. In Council Rock, that's somewhere around $100,000. Do the math. You work 40 years, like the rest of us in the private sector, 40 years times 2.5, 100% times 100. So you get $100,000 retirement. But it gets better. When you're 66, what happens? You get another $20,000, okay, social security. If you work 35 years, it's 87.5 plus the same 20 or close to it. Private sector, average for both retirement and social security, somewhere between 35 and 43, depending on your source. Last area, okay, job security. Go through the contract, the current contract. Current contract, there's three pages on grievances and what you have to do to fire in effect a teacher. Four steps. View with, interview with the principal, okay, interview with the superintendent, the board. There's a stenographer. There's a union representative. How about the private sector? I'm in the oil and gas business. Oil went from $90 to 45. Geologists, petroleum reservoir engineers with very difficult science degrees will be laid off. They'll get three or four months severance, okay? They're not going to have any grievance procedures. There's no union. A lot of people in the private sector would pay 10 or 15% to have the job security that you have as a teacher. One suggestion. There's four new board members that have not voted on a contract. Before you vote on a contract, just do the following. It'll take you five minutes. Take the current teacher's contract, the last matrix, 2015. Go in a room, take a paper, a pencil, that matrix, and a calculator. If you're an engineer or an accountant, do it in your head. Take a teacher who starts with a bachelor's degree, okay, and go down the vertical matrix. 44, 469 is first year. Imagine he's there for four years and typically completes, say, 24 credit hours. What does his salary become? 44, 469, up to 64, 808. So he gained 44% in four years and 11% average per year on a straight-line basis. Does that happen in the private sector? It doesn't. I've been in the private sector, the big bad corporate world, all my life. It doesn't happen, especially since the reception, recession. Not doing the same job. You might get transferred. You might have a whole bunch of people under you, and your responsibilities change, but you don't get that for the same job. I have no, I have no problem with the 44. I think it's low. It could be higher. It's the way the teachers move through the matrix. In eight or nine years, they've almost doubled their salaries. That does not happen in the private sector. It simply doesn't. Pennsylvania Education Department, Department of Education reports that every year, we have some 90 universities that produce 15,000 teachers. How many vacancies? 4,000. We go to Pedlar's Village. I have English teachers waiting on the table, hoping to get on the gravy train. But why are we paying an English teacher $107,000 or $100,000? A physics teacher, we might have to. If we were able to lay off the $107,000 teachers and hire qualified replacements at 70, the line for English and history teachers would go from here to the Temperance Hatch or maybe to Tyler Park. For physics teachers, it might only be two people, supply and demand. The Pennsylvania Department of Education says we have to have a thorough and efficient education. I watch the board meetings. Our education appears very thorough. But if you pay $107,000 for something that has a market value way less, you're not efficient. You're not close to efficient. Rather than just close and walk away, there's a lot of people that feel like I do, but they don't want to get up and say it. I, I was in the Army, I was an officer in the Army, 22 years, so it doesn't bother me to say it at all. But rather than just walk away, let me give you some specific suggestions. Assuming you're going to keep the matrix, okay, the current matrix with 11 vertical, nine horizontal steps. Currently, currently, the vertical steps go from 44,500 approximately to 80,000 over 11 years. 11 years is the shortest in any school district around. Most are 15 or 16. In the real world, in the private sector, when I worked at Price Waterhouse, if you want a corner office as a partner, okay, you didn't get there in 11 years. It probably took you 20 or 25, okay? When I was in the Army, I, it took me 18 to make Colonel. I didn't get the star, but if I got the star, if we'd taken 24, you don't get it in 11 years. Suggestion, instead of 1 to 11 on the vertical scale, make it 1 to 20. Take the same $35,000 and spread it over 20 instead of 11. The other one, okay, the horizontal matrix, nine steps. Previously, I quoted for you from Bill Gates, Center for American Progress, Arn Duncan, Center for American Progress, a little organization. A master's degree does not a master teacher make. There's no correlation between a master's degree and teaching effectiveness. You can go online, you will find some organizations that say there are. And if you trace them, most of them are teachers' organizations, okay? Think of your own career, all your degrees. Were the most effective teachers those with the most degrees? Yet we're paying 25 or 35% per degree. Suggestion, get rid of all nine steps and instead reimburse someone who wants to get a bona fide master's degree. When they get it, give them another $20,000 one-time payment, and that's it. Last factor, and I'll sit down, inflation. What should you do about inflation? The last, the contract you currently have, that's an A minus, okay? You stopped the bleeding, but you did not excise the cancer. The cancer, the matrix that you have is still there. Inflation, the prior contract from 2009 to 2012 had fixed increments, 2.5%, 2.5%, 1.25%. In addition, because of the ma, teachers moving through the matrix, there's another 2% in each year. So in that three-year period, 2009 to 12, teachers on average, not everyone, on average, increased approximately 12% over that period. What happened to the private sector in that recession period? According to the Census Bureau, in Bucks County, it went down 1%. And that's got everybody in it. If you could extract the teachers from the number I can, it probably went down more than 1%, okay? Why? Why did that happen? Because you had a fixed, you had a fixed set increase that a recession set in, okay? I'm in the oil and gas business, okay? Six months ago, we were selling crude oil for $90 a barrel. Now it's $45 a barrel, okay? We thought it would decrease, but not to $45 a barrel. I've been in the business 35 years. I didn't know it would happen. You know, we were talking years ago about bond rates. Inflation will come. We've got to get these bonds right now because inflation will come and it'll cost us much more. The bond rate will be higher. The long-term bonds you have will lose value because of inflation. Didn't happen, okay? I don't know what's going to happen with oil prices. You don't know what's going to happen with oil prices or bond prices. Why fix yourself with a fixed amount? Base the, the inflation on an index, a CPI, all urban consumers, something like that. You say, well, what about Act 1? Well, limit it to Act 1. If the index is 1.5 and Act 1 is 1.4, it's 1.4. If it decreases for the private sector, it decreases for teachers, too, okay? We don't have any, 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 any special interests. You're, four of you have never voted on a contract. You're going to have to vote this time, okay? You're going to be under immense pressure. You're going to have the teachers, their relatives, the unions following you. You're going to have distinguished teacher stories, and there are. My, my, my two, I have two sons that attend Council Rock. There were good distinguished teachers, okay? And there were some that were doing the minimum. The good, they're being paid an excellent salary. I mean, we are paying them for being distinguished, okay? So stand fast. You spend a lot of your board meetings talking about how we can raise more money. This is, this is, don't be penny wise and dollar foolish. This is the big dollar item. If you get this one, this right, and then you blow a $15,000 contract, you will never hear a word from them because it's immaterial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stadler. Is there any other public comment?
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. There are things that the last speaker spoke about that I agree with. I'm on record for someone who was against the extension in 2009 at the height of the Great Recession started. I tune for efficiencies, and one of the reasons when I was on the capital planning committee, well, I suggested that we close the schools because I want the money to be spent in technology instead. And tonight, I want to thank Joy, Denise, and all those involved in the technology presentation that we saw at academic standards. We did see the creme de la creme. We were, showed ways in which on the grade school level, in a 7th grade social studies class, 11th and 12th grade English class, and at the alternative class, that technology is being used to enhance learning. These teachers are doing things that you couldn't even dream about a couple years ago. They do it, most of them, because they keep educating themselves on their own time and with their own dime. Many of them go to museums, to workshops, they mentor other people, they stay after school, they give up their lunch hour to have STEM clubs. they give up their lunch hour to have STEM clubs. These are really dedicated, wonderful teachers. And I somewhat wish there's a way we could materially reward them. And if we can't, then let's start to recognize them and who they are. It showed, they showed us that students can access lessons from home, either to review it or if they're absent, that collaborative learning is enhanced with technology. Their critical thinking skills, whether it be about writing or analyzing literature, is enhanced just by use of technology. So I'm up here again with this year's, New Year's resolution, which is we need a five-year comprehensive plan on the use of technology in this district. Not just hardware, not just software, but the integration of technology into the classroom. We're not going to, just having deep smarts on a day in February or helping that one teacher will mentor another is not fast enough. We have teachers, we have students doing tremendous things on the grade school level, and that one might not happen when they get to the middle school. Because right now, how a student gets to use and learn about technology is dependent on who his teacher is and where he sits in this district. That is not public education. We need a technology integration specialist and a five-year comprehension plan. Thank you.
Hi. Allison McGann, co-president of the Council Rock Education Foundation. I just wanted to inform the board and community about two upcoming CREF events. One is our second annual Monte Carlo Night fundraiser. That will be on Friday, March thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, seven to eleven P M. At the Upper Southampton Academy at Southampton Day Camp. It's a fun evening, we have table games, we have great food, silent auction items, basket raffles, which feature a basket from every school in the district contributed by the staff. Tickets can be purchased at our CREF website, see our educationfoundation.org. Proceeds help us in awarding grants, innovative teacher grants to classrooms within the district. And these are items that are not funded within the school district budget. As a matter of fact, some of the technology things that were talked about tonight at Academic Standards, actually, people reference some of the grants. The second item is that we are partnering with the CR Green Team. We have a recycling fundraiser currently in effect through the middle of March. You can bring any small electronics to the schools, there are bins in every single school. We will accept old phones, iPads, MP3s, digital cameras, camcorders, even up to the size of a laptop. You can bring them and drop them in the bin. We also take the cords from those items, we have a recycler for those. And all proceeds are shared between CREF and the Council Rock Green Team. And all of this helps to promote environmental responsibility. Any of the CREF activities can be found on our website, see our educationfoundation.org. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay, we'll move to our discussion items. Mr. Kleins, first read, board policies.
Both of these board policies, and I will also defer to Dr. Lambert, are part of required changes to policies on both behavior support and gifted education. Their first read, likely they'll have a couple of changes. Mr. Cox's group is going to look at them too. And I know Mr. Abelson has some questions about them too. But if, Dr. Lambert, can I ask you just to speak briefly to each of these two policies?
One thirteen is on behavioral support programming and one fourteen is on gifted programming. We are required through our audit process to update these periodically. The language in both of them is pretty much pulled straight from regulations, so there's not a lot of wiggle room in there. If you were to look at the IDEA or the chapter sixteen from the school code, it's pretty much restating what's in there.
Mr. Abelson, will you ask your question, I thought was a good question, about student?
The policies refer to school students. And is that Council Rock public school students? Or does it apply to all school students in Council Rock's school district, whether they're private or public students?
So we're required to do identification processes through IDEA on special services, but I didn't know the answer on gifted services. Do we have the same child find-
We have a child find responsibility for gifted services. We have an obligation to offer programming to those students if it's requested of us. The behavior policies, we have, we have responsibilities to report to the state when some of these strategies are pulled into play. And we need to do that for students that are our students, but perhaps not attending one of our schools.
So my suggestion would be that the policy be clear, especially, let's take point fourteen. Item one at the bottom, it says all students within the district.
Sorry.
So make sure that's, all students means all students, whether they're private or-
Residing within the Council Rock-
Right. We regard this as the public or private students. School students. And then what ages is that also? Is it, is it started pre-K or?
For the gifted one?
Yes.
That would be school age only.
School age.
But I will look at that.
Mr. Kleins, you listed this policy as one thirteen dot two. And that is revision. We have a policy one dot thirteen, one thirteen dot one, and that's not available on the board site, on the website.
We may not have a one thirteen dot one.
Well, it's listed in our, it's just not available. It's listed, but not available, I think.
I think it's one thirteen point one. I think the revision looks like it's one thirteen point two.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, can, can we see these, please? Or can you provide the board with redline? Because this is a PDF.
It hasn't been redlined yet, that's the first run.
One thirteen dot one is marked as a revision of an existing policy. One thirteen dot two is marked as a revision of a policy, which we don't have a one thirteen dot two. So it must be one thirteen dot one.
But we didn't red, respectfully, we didn't redline that. We took the PSBA policy on this and just revised it according. We didn't, I didn't take the, oftentimes we'll take a policy and we'll change it. And this policy, we just copied what PSBA's new policy was for.
But we had a one thirteen dot one.
Right, but I don't have a redline for that. I don't have any way to do that. I mean, I could, I could match them back, place to place, but what we did here is take-
Well, we're, then provide a Word copy of both, so I'll do the compare in Word. My issue is, I don't know what changed. So it's great to have a new policy, but I don't know what changed. Is, are you saying there is not a one thirteen dot one?
I have to look. Mr. Grub, I haven't had a chance to look there yet.
A few days ago, one, on board docs, it was one thirteen point one on the top right-hand corner.
It may have been just copied over as one thirteen point two.
Okay, because the, but that's, then I'd like to see it as a Word document so we can see the difference between the two. That's all I'm looking to understand. It's great that we're changing it, but we've had things that have changed before, and the law requires a certain aspect to change. And we can go, we can't go sub to the law, to the requirement, but there's certain things where we're, our past practice.
It should be one thirteen point one, I apologize.
You understand what I'm asking for about comparison?
I do, I just, again, I understand if it's an intellectual exercise, but as Dr. Lambert said, for both of these, these come with new changes in the regulation and straight out of the PSBA policy exchange. So what was before was overruled by new regulations and new audit requirements. And that's why looking backwards to see what's changed would be a good intellectual exercise, but may not be helpful.
It's a good practical exercise. The pol, the state law may say you have to do something, pick it, whatever it is, with, with six times a year. And we may have through past practice made it seven times a year. So we could go superior to the law. Maybe we have been superior to the law. And I'd like to know that we're going to change it and make it now. Only, I, I don't know without looking at it. So that's why I need the comparison of the two to understand what changed in both cases. So I understand what changed. Because we've had it before where the change, as, as a board, we sit here, and I don't know what the changes are. So I don't know if I want to be contacting legislators to say what a stupid change that was. We've had stupid changes coming out of legislature before. And if we just sit here and rubber stamp it, it's not the way that we should be working.
Wouldn't it still be on the underscore word, on the website?
The old one thirteen point one and the old one fourteen is still the school board policy.
Two-word documents so I can compare it. I don't have the time to sit and read through PDF with left eye on one, right eye on the other.
I love policy.
Well, Bill's in charge. I mean, we've had, we had, just the other week, we had, we had parents talking, standing here, talking about gifted education, some, some concerns they had about it. But we're passing a policy now. Let's, let's see what the policy is and see what their concerns were.
I can go through them and highlight the changes.
Are there any other questions?
We'll bring them back to you likely for another first read.
Yeah, I do have a question. On the, on the gifted education, number three on the first page, refers to reports of gifted students. Can you clarify what that is?
As part of our strategic plan, we're required, there's a part on gifted education, and we are required to include information in that strategic plan that goes before, goes to PDE for approval. What I will say, Joe, I'm not sure about is the costs required. I don't know how that is submitted, if that's reported anyway, Bob, through our budget process.
Is this something new or is this just something that we've been doing, the reports?
I don't believe it's new, but I'll check. I'll compare it with the old one to see if it was in there, but it's not new.
It won't take long to compare, the old one's pretty short.
Yes, it is. I, I went through both policies and neither policy is changing our practice when I, when I read through them. But I will go back and highlight any changes in the documents themselves.
Well, one fourteen's easy because our policy was one page and the new one is not.
But as I said, they, they come from the regulations and we've been following the regulations for at least as long as I've been here. So it's not changing what we're doing in any way.
And those regulations that include an observation that we have to include is in a board policy?
Say that again, please.
Do those regulations require that we memorialize it in a board policy?
I don't know that the regulations require it, but the auditors who come in from PDE require it. So in order for us to get a clean bill from the audits we had last spring, I need to demonstrate that these were revised, that these were reviewed and approved, and board approved.
Okay, so just so I'm sure, because this is an area I play in. So we have auditors for a state agency that are coming in and requiring documentation in excess of what the regulations to which they are supposed to be auditing are required. I just want to make sure I understand that the auditors are giving us audit observations. It's not a criticism of us, it's a criticism of the process. The auditors, the standard is the regulations. They are not to come in and create their own rules that then you jump through hoops for.
We didn't write a policy based on what the auditors said. We went to what is the Pennsylvania School Boards Association model policy, and we said to them, our policy, our policy, one fourteen most particularly, appears to be outdated. Can you give us our, your new model policy? That model policy is written by attorneys out of PSBA. They send it to us. We made sure that Eastburn and Gray has seen it, but it's not, Dr. Lambert and I didn't come up with that language. It's what the attorneys from PSBA were, suggest to us. So I would assume that the majority of what they wrote are legal requirements based on their understanding of regulations.
And I understand that my point was simply, and I think Bill had made the point before, I'm not going to argue it. I, I just would like to know where the law says that we have to have a policy that says this. Because if, if the law says it, our writing a policy that says, look at, look at the law, is, is silly. And, and what it does do is it keeps a lot of attorneys employed.
Well, the good news is, if you look at the policy, every one of the, the-
It's all citations.
Have citations to Title twenty-two, Section sixteen. So I'm, Rob and his team are going to be looking at it too. But there, those citations are voluminous up and down the policy. So you can find that in the Title twenty-two pieces.
Agreed. And I could have one line in the policy that says, look at Title twenty-two, we're good. This, this policy is to conform with Title twenty-two, and we're done. I don't want to be in the business of writing policies that echo law if I can just point to law and say I'm done. We have other things we should do, and I'll shut up and let us do them.
And I can't pull up, for some reason I'm having trouble pulling up my chapter sixteen, fourteen. I will check them when I get back to you with the highlights that it may indeed, this, the school code chapters may indeed require board policy. I have to check that.
We good? Mr. Abelson?
No, fine.
Okay. So let's move to our items for board approval. Let's go with number one. Mrs. Thomas, if you could read that, please.
I move to approve the minutes of January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, Board of School Directors meeting as presented in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
The minutes that you see have a minor revision that Mr. Bylick asked for that just simply delineated in a little bit more detail the two issues that Mark had raised. But other than that, they are the minutes from the January twenty-second meeting. And the reason they've been accelerated is to allow Council Rock to take the approved minutes, complying with the PDE regulations, package them with a letter, and send it off to PDE for approval to the reorganization of Wrightstown. So those approval minutes are in front of you tonight. And if there are any questions, either myself or Kapu would be happy to, to help you. Mr. Bylick, were those changes okay?
Yeah, they're fine.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Number roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brooks, could you read the next motion, please?
I move to approve the Bucks County Intermediate Unit number twenty-two Programs and Services and Instruction Materials and Research Services budget for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand school year as presented in the attachments to this agenda at a total cost not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, subject to audit.
Second.
Evening, Mr. Reinhardt.
Hello there, I'm ready.
Do you want to speak a little bit to Programs and Services?
I sure can. This really represents a very small portion of what the intermediate unit does, but it's the only budget that the district actually approves. It represents one point seven million dollars of their spending. It is really the budget that involves direct curriculum instruct, curriculum, instruction assessment, staff development, instructional materials, research, and instructional technology. And that's really all it focuses upon. The amount we pay is based on two somewhat detailed formulas, and I could go over them if you'd really want me to. But all in all, last year we paid a hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars out of that one point seven. This year we're paying a hundred and forty thousand five eighty-two. It's really, we're having a reduction of one thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. I can try to answer any questions. I'm sure Joy and Barry can answer any specific questions about the type of programs that we receive specifically, but that's it.
Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abelson?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy, can you read number three, please?
I move to award maintenance, equipment backhoe and snowbox bid number fourteen dash sixty-six to Robert E. Little Incorporated for the backhoe at a total cost not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And the snowbox to Tanner's Lawn and Snow Equipment at a total cost not to exceed two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. Both awards are subject to audit.
Second. Mr. Taylor, you want to talk about backhoes and snowboxes?
Sure. A while back, a year or two ago, we had terminated use of the backhoe that we had in the district. But we do have a couple of tractors that are beneficial to us. In lieu of purchasing a new backhoe, which would be in the range of thirty to eighty thousand dollars to go out and buy a backhoe, we looked at buying some components that would fit the tractors that we could utilize and benefit from the multiple use of pieces of equipment for those. So the backhoe attachment is basically exactly what we would have had with our old yellow Cat backhoe, which is a hydraulic bucket. It does have a seat section that actually sits on the back of the tractor, has outriggers, and an actual arm for excavating. And I did share a photo of that with the board if you have any questions in terms of what that looks like. And then the box, snowbox is basically a rectilinear box that attaches to the tractor that allows us to push the snow through a parking lot without creating a snow hedgerow behind the cars. If there are cars in place, we can cleanly move snow and not trap cars in the lot. It allows us to move more snow at a single shot and again, works with our tractors.
Thank you.
I have one simple question.
Simple.
Just one. You'll laugh. Did we consider the thumb for the, did we consider the thumb for the backhoe? The hydraulic thumb?
Not that I'm aware of. I'd have to talk to Ted Sloan to see what else he was considering, but-
The only reason I ask is, just sort of clear, when you have a backhoe, the thumb is actually like a thumb, it comes in and grabs. Because in our use of that backhoe, we're going to wind up using it a lot to do clearing of things. Not just digging holes, but clearing, moving branches that have been taken down on a tree. And that thumb makes it functional.
Yeah, primarily we'll use it for assisting in putting in some of the smaller pieces of playground equipment. After we auger holes, we'll use it for basketball backstops, we'll use it for small trenches. We don't usually use it for kind of larger projects like that, so.
No, I, I actually, I'm very thrilled that, you know, we, we got in a good process around- No, I actually, I'm very thrilled that, you know, we got into a good process around this equipment. We cleaned it up. We put ourselves in a better prepared area for insurance purposes. And this, how many tractors do we have that will take this backhoe?
We have two.
So it's good use of our, it's allowing us to switch around where the machine is and not dedicate and lock it up. So it's good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record the motion as passing by unanimous consent. Mr. Grubb, could you read number four, please?
I move to accept the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I think it's very self-explanatory. We talked about this quite a bit. And the last finance meeting went over it in detail with the auditor. I'll answer any questions you have.
What was the audit? What did the auditor say?
He said we did a good job. The financial statements are materially, presented fairly in all material respects.
They call that clean audit, right?
Yeah.
As opposed to the backhoe that we have to move things around?
Yeah, we appreciate the presentation. It's easy to understand, made everything really, really clear. You guys did a great job with it. Any questions for Mr. Reinhardt? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to board items. Is there any old business? Any new business?
Mr. Klein, can you give us an update on the progress on the school calendar and discussion points that have come from that?
I've shared almost all the emails that we've had, probably less than 20. Every one of them, for the most part, would say open after Labor Day. To the extent that I could respond to people, I explained why we would not want to open before Labor Day because of the lateness of the calendar and the problems that would create. Most people were very kind in their responses. So you've received the majority of the influence or the input. We will put the calendar in front of the board at the next meeting.
So just to be very clear for people, you know, because some people will hear the meeting but not look at the attachment, as the school calendar is currently being constructed for next year, it is not in your best interest to take your vacation the last week of August. Just put it out there because people may be surprised thereafter.
Well, you can take it the last week of August, last full week of August. Because the only August date we pick up is the Monday of that week before Labor Day, which is August 31st. There are a couple people who've said their vacation runs into that. And I would say to those folks what I would say to anyone who's inconvenienced by some of these issues. We will work with you, absolutely. But the one thing I will say to the school community is this is not a surprise. This is something that we have done for a long period of time where we have had a formula so that when the Labor Day falls on the four, five, six, or seven, for the most part, we've opened before Labor Day. And when it falls one, two, and three, we've opened after. And it's on the bottom of every one of the calendars we pass.
And that's posted at the website, right?
Yes, exactly. So it's, I recognize that it does inconvenience people. And all I would say is we'll work with you. It's not a problem. We'll find a way to make sure that things are done. We'll do orientations a little bit ahead of time. Anything we need to do to make the kids transition well, we'll do it.
Great. We'll move to the committee reports. We had a fantastic academic standards meeting earlier this evening. Mrs. Brooks?
It was fantastic. Tonight we talked about technology in the district. We got an overview of some of the overarching things and the standards that are used in assessing things and how we want to move forward. We had presentations and examples of stellar exemplary uses of technology at the elementary, middle school, high school, and at the Sloan School. And I wish that we could have filmed that and shown that to the community because it really was unbelievable what some of these teachers are doing. And, you know, the sentiment was we just hope that the great things that these teachers are doing are being shared with colleagues across buildings and throughout the district. And so hopefully there'll be a trickle-down effect, but it was exceptional. This presentation will be posted online. I think it's going to lose a little bit in the translation because part of what made it so dynamic was the presenters themselves. But clearly, this is something, certainly for me and academic standards, that is absolutely top of mind trying to move this forward, making technology a priority.
I want to go on Hollywood's site and just listen to some of her lectures.
I said to Barry and Joy at the end, "I wish I could be a student now." I mean, and it's really unbelievable because I don't feel like my kids were out of Council Rock all that long ago. I mean, well, it's three and five years ago, but it's really impressive to see how far it's come just in that time. So it's nice to imagine, but actually you can't even imagine because five years ago you wouldn't have imagined this. But it's, these were exceptional examples of what's going on. I hope we can move it out even bigger.
Exceptional, too. There's just great moments to see the opportunity of how much these people love what they do. And I think that came through loud and clear.
Yeah, and I think to keep it, for me, the takeaway was consistency and to be able to ensure that we've got the resources and the focus, you know. I agree with earlier public comment that says we've got to find a way to deliver, you know, a consistent experience. Can we get to here right away? Probably not. But if we can do this in a planful way, that would probably be a good investment. So it was a great meeting.
You know, for me, it's, it makes an interesting question for me, which is so much has happened in the past 10 to 15 years in this realm. And we've talked before about education for adults and how to do adult education. And I would tell you, Denise, I mean, I wish that some of those presentations had been taped because I think that if we showed those presentations and we said to adults who had graduated, "Would you like to take a course at night to do some of these things or to learn some of these things?" I think we'd have, obviously there's money involved, but I think we'd have people coming because once you see how to do it and once you see how it works. The teacher was speaking about how to put together a thesis statement. And, you know, it's a funny thing when you sit there and you're out of high school for a couple of years. You sit there and you go, "Golly, I don't even know if I could." And just the, even the power of some of the presentations they made in the room. And that's the challenge. That's the question I have, which is, you know, are, and, you know, Rick's question before about policy was, is it only kids who go to the schools or is it all kids in the community? And then you look at it further and you go, it's an interesting thing. Our legal mandate, required mandate, is for children to 18 to 21 with disabilities. But it's an interesting question which says, how can we help the rest of the community? Are there things the community could know? And someone could say, "Well, that's what the community college is for." Yeah, but we also have schools. We have very bright people. And is there a way to make that work? We've tried it in the past. I'll keep coming back to it. We've tried it in the past. I think there's got to be a way to make it work that we could help people, you know. People have lost jobs. People are, you know, unemployment is down. The question is, is unemployment really down or have people become frustrated? And the question is, how could we help people retool? What little things could we do with people that would help them retool? I don't, I wish there was a way to get around to it. I'd love if we could come up with a way as a board to help our community retool.
I agree. The only thing I want to add is that normally academic standards meets the first Thursday of the month prior to a board meeting. For March, we're going to do something a little different. We did this last year as well where we joined and coupled with Mr. Klein's Superintendent's Parent Advisory, which is a group of representatives of all the schools across the district coming together for panel discussions. And it was a very good marriage of academic standards and connecting with the resources and the people who were coming out for that meeting. So we will be doing that again on Monday, March 9th. Nine? Yes. And so I encourage people to come to that. It's a, it's a really helpful thing. We split up into secondary level and elementary level. You can go back and forth between the groups. And there's just a collection of some of our staff and professionals that ordinarily you don't have that much access to that cross-section of people for, it's an open dialogue of questions. It's a really helpful and informative night. I hope you can all come.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Mrs. McKessy, facilities?
The next meeting of the facilities committee will be next Thursday, the 12th. And the vast majority of what we will be focusing on is capital planning. And there will be presentations and updates regarding proposed conceptual plans at Newtown Middle and Holland, and as well as the Chancellor Center reorganization.
Great. Mr. Grubb, tell us about your first finance meeting?
I'll tell you that the next finance meeting will be February 26th. And then I'll back up to tell you that this one, we went over the auditor report that we saw. We spent a lot of time talking about bus transportation. We have a new, a new contract that's coming out. Unfortunately, that contract foreshadowing, but it's public, which is the, that contract, we only had a few bidders. And the lowest bidder is still going to reflect an increase in the cost of transportation to the district of 7.63%. We are doing some things that are interesting in that contract. We'll speak about that next time. In a few weeks, we'll talk about that. We're going to be moving from diesel. Our intention is move to propane. One of the things that will happen will be the buses will be quieter, the buses will be cleaner. The buses will start faster on cold, cold days without having to sit and warm up. You know, the propane vehicle starts and is at running temperature immediately. It is an interesting adventure to move forward with that. And it's a lot of good work done by Mr. Reinhardt and Jack Panero, our bus transportation manager. Remind me what else we've covered. Those were the high-order things.
Our debt management.
Correct.
For 2015.
So PFM came in and spoke to us about, we all know, we've all talked about that we will have potentially, we will be putting out new bonds. And how will we do that? If you recall, in past year, the most recently when we did some refinance and new money, we had run them as four small flights rather than one large flight of a big number. At this point, it looks like we will do that again. That helps to create a little bit of a hedge against a radical change in the potential interest rate. Rates are, as the guy from PFM tells us every time he sees us, at a record all-time low. And our plan, just so everybody is aware, the plan for money, for new money, is still within the framework that Mr. Reinhardt has worked for a while, which is that the debt maintenance should not exceed $17,050,000 in any one year. And we'll stay under that threshold. It's not a regulatory threshold. It is an arbitrary threshold set by the district and enforced by Mr. Reinhardt. But that has given us a pathway to stability for a long time and hopefully will continue. I think that's what we covered. That's it. Finance, February 26th. Be there.
Thank you, sir. Given Ms. Sexton and Dr. Foster aren't here, I will have them forward updates if they have any. Do you have anything from MBIT for Dr. Foster?
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. And I don't remember if we reported on it last meeting or not, but our next meeting's coming up on the 9th of February. We did have a reorganization at the last MBIT meeting and nothing changed, thankfully. And we had a great presentation by the Skills USA Kids. That's always a really outstanding and impressive group that they are, so I look forward to the next one.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Bylick. We'll move to our second public comment session. Is there any public comment?
Mrs. Brooks, Nancy Carol Newtown Borough. I want to thank you for saying you wish we could have filmed it. Why do we have to wish? Why can't we? One of the pet peeves of mine is the way we use our TV channel. I'm embarrassed when I see what other school districts do. Alls we can do is put up still pictures and the same music over and over and over and over and over again. It gives me a headache. We, there are many things that happen in this district that the public could gain a much better understanding of what goes on in the district if it was put up on the web. You would get more support for a lot of things that you're trying to do. If we can't afford to hire someone to do it, then maybe we could get a club up of the students that are studying that. And we could just run the tape and let them edit it and put it on, then craft. Maybe we could get a grant from them. We have to do something more creative. The public needs to be engaged in the wonderful things that Council Rock is doing, whether it be with the understanding of what an audit is or what you're talking about and facilities. Many people in this community are interested in the plans for Holland and Newtown Middle, but they're not going to be able to attend a 6:00 meeting. We could be putting that up on our TV. We have to better utilize it. So when you're talking about your five-year plan for technology, how about a 50-day plan for how we could better the TV? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comment?
There were four executive sessions held by the board since the last board meeting. Each of them concerned confidential personnel matters, January 28th, January 29th, February 2nd, and February 3rd. That's all I have, Mr. Block.
Thank you. Is there any board comment, Mr. Bylick?
Yeah. You know, I was going to bring it up when Denise was talking about her meeting. And I brought it up before about televising the committee, the committee meetings we have. And I know there's a feeling that these are less formal. It gives us an opportunity to sit around the table with the community. But like Nancy had said, for folks who can't make it or even board members who can't make it, I think that we should look at the cost and then we can evaluate if it makes sense to not have them live or taped or to have them live or taped. Because right now, we don't know. We don't know what the cost is. So is that something we can look at?
You know, ballpark? Put you on the spot?
I can look into it for you.
Okay.
I'm not good with doing math in my head quickly.
No, I wouldn't ask you that. I was just curious based on what these things are.
It's the length of the meetings. We need three people to work the microphones and the cameras and everything. And we pay them an hourly rate, so we would just need to factor in how many hours you wanted to do that, but that's what it would cost.
Could it be done next door? Or would it have to be done here?
You would have, this is where the cameras are and they're fixed.
Right.
So we'd have to do it in this room.
What technology did we use this week?
Video conferencing equipment?
Yeah.
We use the, I use, we could, I could talk to them and see if we could use, they have a digital recorder system. And we used video conferencing equipment to connect to that recorder and set that up. I don't know if there were charges for that, but we could do it.
Actually, we used a GoPro because the video recorder didn't work.
First night.
The first night. That's my point was, you know, if you, I hear it. It's funny because I was actually reading all the board meetings. And if I got a commission, I'd be here. I wouldn't be here. If, it's funny because I just was reading board minutes from, or an article in the newspaper from 1999 where a board member was recommending that, at that time, to only televise one of the meetings each month because it was thought to be stifling the conversation and it was expensive. I think that if you acknowledge that the production value, if you will, of the other meetings would be less, there's ways to do it cheaper with a static camera in the corner. As long, I've watched other townships have one camera running and they're switching just between the one camera, the two, they have two cameras. They switch between them. That's all they do. But you capture the gist of it. I was, I wanted to take a moment to respond to the fellow who spoke at the mic earlier about the teacher's contract. He proposed a lot of ideas and they're interesting ideas. But I think one of the things you have to realize is that within the state of Pennsylvania, within the way the labor laws are constructed, the contract winds up being a bilateral agreement. That means that both sides have to agree. So you're right when he speaks to the fact that, you know, there's been a change in industry and within oil and gas, people are going to walk in and find their jobs are gone. Well, let me be very clear. The things that are in the policy, the things that are in the contract about terminating a teacher with tenure are primarily around performance. This board and this administration has, just a few years ago, reduced staff by 60 people. That is not for cause. That is for finance. It's not a for cause directed as a personnel action. And there are ways this board, this administration, does that and can do that. And there are ways this board, this administration, does that and can do that within the framework of the state laws. The other items about changing the matrix, I will tell you that I believe that a change in the matrix is warranted, but it's not unilateral. Charging for a market rate for people, it's a great idea. But we have to work within what the state law, the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board enforces certain things that the school, for unions, that the school teachers have assembled as unions, and we're obligated to work within that framework. So I hear the points, and I take the points, but I want to make sure that the public, and I know that the board understands their great observations. They are directional. They are something to aspire to. But it doesn't happen unilaterally. The board can't come in and make it so. This is not Star Trek, "Make it so." We can't do that. We have to work within the framework of bilateral negotiations. And I just want to make it clear, you know, we hear those comments, but it's just not this board deciding to do it. It needs to be a bilateral agreement. That's my end of my comment. Thanks.
Any further board comment? Okay, I just wanted to let the board know I will not be here. I'll be away for business during our 219 meeting. So Mr. Abramsen will be presiding. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Good night.
Chair, I won't be at the next meeting. I'm being Californian, too, so FYI.